Ladies and gentlemen, I call to order our Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting of May nineteenth. Item two is public comments, community announcements, recognitions. Do we have any? We have none. Item number three is consent agenda. We have only one item on the consent agenda, which is the approval of the Public Works Authority Meeting of May fifth. I'll entertain a motion. You have a motion and a second? We have a second. Any other discussion? We'll go roll call. Councilwoman Paget?
Aye.
Councilwoman Channel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Batheroy?
Here.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Long?
Yes.
Councilman Case?
Yes.
Mayor Gatlin, yes, unanimous approval then to approve the consent agenda. And that being the last item on our agenda, I close the Public Works Authority Meeting. And I open our City Council Meeting of May nineteenth. We have a second item on the agenda is a consent agenda. Agenda items A and B. A is the approval of the minutes of the City Council Meeting on May fifth. And B is the approval of the budget amendment number five, amending the budgets of general fund, fire fund, grant fund, and capital project fund. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Do you need any clarification on item B? Hearing none? We'll go roll call vote again. Vice Mayor Case?
Aye.
Councilwoman Long?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Batheroy?
Aye.
Councilwoman Channel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Paget?
Yes.
Mayor Gatlin, yes, unanimous approval then to approve the consent agenda. And that being the last item on our agenda, I close the Public Works Authority Meeting. And I open our City Council Meeting of May nineteenth. We have a second item on the agenda is a consent agenda. Agenda items A and B. A is the approval of the minutes of the City Council Meeting on May fifth. And B is the approval of the budget amendment number five, amending the budgets of general fund, fire fund, grant fund, and capital project fund. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Do you need any clarification on item B? Hearing none? We'll go roll call vote again. Vice Mayor Case?
Aye.
Councilwoman Long?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Batheroy?
Aye.
Councilwoman Channel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Paget?
Yes.
Mayor Gatlin, yes, unanimous approval then to approve the consent agenda items A and B. Item number three, discussion of possible action to confirm Mayor's appointment of Valerie Duncan through the Guthrie Historic Preservation Commission for a new three-year term through March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. This is an appointment that comes representative from the Guthrie Historic Preservation Commission. Comes from the county historic preservation and she is their nominee again. And that's why I think we look forward to you.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote again. Councilwoman Long?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Batheroy?
Aye.
Councilwoman Channel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Paget?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Case? Mayor Gatlin, yes, unanimous approval then to appoint Valerie Duncan for a second three-year term to March thirty-first on the Guthrie Historic Preservation Commission. Item number four, discussion of possible action to adopt and approve ordinance number three-three-three-three, amending the Guthrie Code of Ordinance concerning buildings and so on. And so far, I'm not going to read the whole thing down, but I'm sure that you are going to present this in excellent fashion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Council. Yes, I'll go over that whole part so there's an understanding of what we're doing. In fact, that'll be my first part of it in that. But in general, this is to amend our existing architectural design standards for residential, commercial, and industrial. It also includes some amendments to the existing accessory structures ordinance as well as the fences. And that kind of leads me into the, when you read the ordinance, it talks about repealing sections and doing this and that. And right now, the architectural design standards are basically their own section in the municipal code. They are traditionally a zoning code element. And so the repealing is so we don't have two different, basically, codes when people go to look. So part of it will take the existing architectural design standards, put it in the zoning code. And then on top of that, we're doing some amendments to those criteria in that. And once we go down the road with the zoning code update, you're going to see similar stuff. We have a lot of sections that are out and about in the different parts of the municipal code that are traditionally in the zoning code. One of the other big benefits is by putting all this under one document, the average person, developer, and that can go to the zoning code and pretty much find everything they're going to need in terms of development, whether it's a single family to a large commercial, whatever, it's all under the same purview. It also makes it a lot easier to regulate in that when it comes to possible zoning issues with stuff to have it in the zoning code. So again, having said that, the first part of that ordinance is, again, going to repeal what's currently in the municipal code and then put it in the zoning code, which will be section six of the zoning code. And now we're looking at, again, the, some of the changes and amendments. So starting with that, I'll go over the architectural design standards on the residential realm. A lot of the residential standards we had currently, a lot of it honestly was just a lot of wording that really said, we had four or five paragraphs that pretty much said the same thing. So the first part of that was taking a lot of that wording out and summarizing it and basically putting it into one or two paragraphs rather than four or five. I'm going to hit the big parts because I'm sure that you have some questions and there's going to be some discussion in that. But one of the big changes starts with garages. Currently, our design standards require a two-stall garage. The current amendment would only require a one-stall garage. With a lot of the small properties in town, the seven thousand square foot properties that we have, especially in the original platted area, it became very difficult between lot coverage setbacks and that and even the accessory structure ordinance to put a two-stall garage. In a lot of cases, they were running up against one thing. It didn't meet the accessory building structure ordinance. It didn't meet lot coverage, or you know, there was a multitude of stuff. And honestly, the lots are just not sized for that. If you go around in that area, you see where most properties don't have a garage at all. Or if they do, it's a detached garage off the alley in that, and a lot of them are one-stall. And we have even some other developments, I know, in the north part that have one-stall garages and that. So it would make it mandatory for only one. And actually, our zoning code only requires one parking space for a single-family residence. So once again, we would have that consistency there. It does not prohibit anybody from building a two, three, four-stall garage at all in that it just simply only mandates one. And going on, the other big part of the, of the general residential standards was in regards to like solar, skylights, and that. Those were very restrictive and very difficult to enforce. We had a lot of people in town that wanted to put solar. But by the current code, it basically says if you can see any part of it from the street, you can't have it. So a lot of people were being prevented from actually putting solar on the roofs. A lot of those standards like that were not untypical in codes in the past because as many of you probably know, back in the day, the skylights and more the solar were somewhat unsightly because of how they were built and they were. With technology, it's really helped to where they become blended part of the roof in that and you really don't notice it in that on the average. So that area where, you know, what you would typically see more in a homeowners association rules has been eliminated because it's not necessarily a zoning code element. And it also, again, the biggest thing is it makes it very difficult to enforce and really it become prohibitive to the average property owner. So those were probably the two big areas that were cleared up in the general. Now we move on to one of the new aspects, and it's called the Guthrie Proper Overlay District. As most of you know, in our area here to the north of Noble, the Noble area into the north, the original platted area, the Guthrie Proper subdivision, you have homes that are typical of a bungalow, Victorian colonial type architecture. Most of those homes are built what's called a traditional type of development where you have narrower streets, sidewalks, trees, and again, that type of architecture. We currently do not have anything in our code to, in essence, protect that. Right now, people could go in that neighborhood and pretty much build whatever they want. I found it as an important part, I think, with our community, just like our downtown with the buildings. Those homes and those areas are a unique part of our community and I think they should be, you know, preserved and continued. So if a house burns down, or if you have a vacant lot, you're going to have a home that comes in there and it's going to be consistent with what's in that neighborhood. So that whole, the what?
The alley.
Oh, yeah. And so that section is, and there's a map that was attached in that. It generally is, you know, around the Noble area. The eastern part of it is on Pine, basically to Cottonwood Creek. And then there's a small section that's in the northwest part of that area that's north of Noble, that would be east of Twentieth that encompasses that. There was a map that was attached, so you saw the full area. And so the general idea was not to be too specific because you want creativity, but to put some elements in there so, again, we can be assured we get similar architecture or similar type homes. So one of the things was it will require a front porch. It has to be at least fifty percent of that front facade. It requires a certain amount of windows or openings. As you see in the code, it's called fenestration by an architectural term in that. And there's a certain amount of that that has, that's required. I think it was twenty-five percent, but no more than seventy percent. It prohibits blank facade, so again, if you just want to put nothing on the side of a house and there's nothing there, you can't do that. You're going to have to have at least some windows or some awnings or some type of pop-outs, you know, in that to have something other than a blank facade. And much like the other code, it would only require a one-stall garage. But there's a couple of things with that is it would require it in the rear yard. If they do not have an alley, or if they, more importantly, wanted to put it on the side, they could do so, but there's going to be a minimum setback of twenty feet. So from the front facade, it's going to have to be setback twenty feet. In that area, again, it's because of the development and what you have. The house is the primary thing, the primary focus. So even if you want to put a garage on the side, it's trying to make sure that that garage is still not a focus in that. But it should, it encourages it to be in the backyard, much like you see with most of the homes that are developed there anyway. So those are kind of the highlights of that area. Again, you guys have the ordinance, so if there's some of the specific requirements that you have issues with or want to go over with, obviously, you know, we can do that. But that pretty much hits the main areas of that. The other thing is, is our current code between either the existing architectural design standards or the zoning code do not have any requirements for multifamily. So you get two or more units, they can pretty much do whatever they can in that. So another addition is to have some multifamily residential design standards. And those are pretty basic, if you want to say. It more or less says you're going to have to have some architectural character. One of the best examples I could probably give is on South Division. We have, I think it's a senior housing multifamily development that's on the southern part of Division with a number of buildings. That's what we're looking for. That development actually would meet most of the requirements that are in the multifamily. So again, it's just to make sure that we don't have somebody come along and put basically four square buildings on a property and call it good. We want to have to have it some look and some character. And once again, if we're on the, on the single-family side, going to have some of these requirements, we want to try to have that consistency throughout. So even on the multifamily, we want to kind of have that ramped up so it fits in well. Now the commercial industrial design standards. There were definitely some bigger changes there. And again, I'm sure there's going to be some questions and go over it. Again, some of the, some of it was cleanup where there was a lot of the verbiage that basically said the same thing, but was put in different paragraphs. But the biggest part is going to be on the facades themselves. Right now, as the amendment's written, you would have to have sixty percent brick on all sides of your building in that. The other forty percent could be, you know, any of the other split-face stone, cast stone. It could be hundred percent brick if you want, but it mandates sixty percent brick, which is a change from our current standards. Our current standards, I think, allows up to forty percent metal, if I remember right. Is it forty percent or sixty percent metal? And only forty percent of something else in that of an approved thing. So again, it flips it pretty significantly. If you look around town, there's still a significant amount of buildings that are brick and a hundred percent brick in that. But again, that's an area that obviously we can talk about and if there's issue or concern about that, we can go with that. The other part is, is it did kind of put a little bit more teeth in the architectural standards. So once again, right now, a lot of the buildings, because of the way the design standards were built, is the focal point was the front. And then the rest was almost a square building with pretty much ephesus or like a stucco, and that was it. So there's more verbiage in there to say you're going to have to have at least some type of pop-out, some pilasters, whatever, some other elements, awnings and that. So again, we have a whole building that is, if you want to say, architecturally relevant and looks good rather than the front entrance and some blank facades. And you saw the, you know, some of the verbiage in there and that. But again, going back, it would require sixty percent brick, no more than ten percent metal so in that. So even if you wanted to use metal, you can only do up to ten percent. And then again, that other thirty percent in there, you can have whatever other approved materials, stone, cast stone, split-face block, ephesus, any of that stuff in that. So that's the, I mean, in far as the industrial part, one of the things too is we have a lot of still-zoned industrial properties along Division from the early days of our existence, especially with the railroad here down where, you know, with the creek and where a lot of the old, like I said, railroad stuff is. We have industrial property that's right on Division. One of the things that the current requirements is, is if you're in industrial, you don't have to meet the brick requirement. You basically could have a hundred percent metal. It still requires you to have a little bit of architecture and a little bit, you know, we want a little bit more than just a corrugated square building, but it doesn't require you to have the sixty percent brick. So with some of those industrial properties on Division, it would, it says if you're an industrial property that is adjacent to that Division right away, you have to meet the same architectural criteria as those commercial. So once again, you get that consistency throughout there because the same thing. Then we end up where you have all these buildings that have a certain architectural and some metal and so on. So that would be the only area in industrial where you would be required to have more than just metal in that. And it's also the same corridor and the same overlay that we had established with the accessory structures in that, that Division corridor. And then one of the other things, and I'm going to also say that this is an area that I would recommend a couple of changes because it came to my attention, the way it's written, it could be looked at as allowing a little more than what even the intent of it was. But another section that was, that was put in there was where the commission, the planning commission would have the ability to basically review some applications. Because even, no matter what you do with architectural design standards, there's always going to be somebody that comes in that may have a really nice-looking building and have a really nice idea that we all want, but the code doesn't allow it. So it would allow those circumstances for them to go to the commission and say, yeah, okay, it doesn't quite meet this and that, but overall, it's a good building and it's what we want. So they can say, yeah, we can go ahead and allow you maybe forty-five percent brick or forty percent brick, or, you know, fifteen percent metal or whatever. It was intended to be strictly for the architectural aspects. It was not intended to be for them to allow saying, well, you don't need a garage at all. Or some of the setbacks saying, we can give you setbacks. It was strictly for the architectural. So one of the things that I went and looked, there are specific sections that pertain. And so if one of the changes staff would recommend is that we put the specific sections in there, which are actually sections six-point-one-point-B-four through six-point-one-point-B-eight. Section six-point-one-point-C, point-two-point-B through six-point-one-point-C.
Where are you getting?
They're, they're under the, they're under each of the residential design standards. They're the actual sections and they're the specific paragraphs relating to architecture.
Okay.
And that. And so, and all of these would be with that. And again, it was to make sure that there wasn't a misunderstanding where the commission could start granting variances to setbacks or other stuff. That's really not within their power and that really wasn't the intent. Again, it was to have an ability, if there's some type of building or architectural format or something that comes along that wasn't accounted for, we have a way to approve it in that. It also, to be honest with you, is a way that if somebody comes in and they don't agree with staff and how we're interpreting or how we're regulating it, it's another mechanism to go to where there's a body to say, yes, staff's right. Or, well, no, we're fine with that, so we can allow them to do that. So it was a twofold thing. But again, it was with the architectural aspects, not the what you would call bulk standard aspects in that. And I'll give that to, to the city clerk because I have it lined out here, but I just wanted to add that part of it. And that's pretty much all of the residential, commercial, and industrial design standards for the most part in a nutshell in that. And so I'm going to move on to the residential accessory buildings. Overall, there's not, you know, a lot of the code, probably, I'd say seventy-five percent of the existing ordinance is remaining the same. The actual, the architectural aspects of it, of where you can have metal, where you cannot have metal, none of that has changed. It really, the only parts that have changed are the number of accessory structures you can have, how the square footage is determined, and what your maximum type of thing is. The existing code laid out, and you guys probably know this, laid it out to where you had a couple of criteria that would determine how big of a accessory building you had. But it also went to one step further where it gave it as a maximum square footage that you can have. So the current ordinance says if it's fifty percent of the primary structure's livable area, so if you have a sixteen-hundred-square-foot house, the total square footage you can have for that property is eight hundred square feet. And so that was one of the other things we were running into. But if the, there was a chart there and it said, well, if you're on a six-thousand-square-foot lot or a seven-thousand-square-foot lot, you only get around four hundred or five hundred or whatever. Well, that was more restrictive, so that was your maximum. A lot of times, we had people who wanted to put, you know, and then you had the mandatory two-stall garage, which is roughly about five hundred square feet. So we had a lot of properties where they were having a hard time between the square footage of the garage, the lot coverage and that to even meet the two, or the two-car garage, let alone have any other accessory structures. So even outside of their accessory, or their two-stall garage, they couldn't even have their little hundred-and-twenty-square-foot or, you know, a hundred and, or two-hundred-square-foot put lawnmowers or, you know, whatever, storage. And so the current amendment will still use the fifty percent rule, but it won't be total square footage. It'll be, no, no single structure can exceed fifty percent of the primary structure's livable area. So again, we go back to a sixteen-hundred-square-foot house. You get eight hundred square feet. So if you want to put an eight-hundred-square-foot building, as long as you meet setbacks, lot coverage and that, you can do that. And then the limitation is two. It still only limits it to two. The change on the limitation was, is basically not looking to penalize them if they wanted to put an accessory garage. Because currently, per our ordinance, if you have an accessory garage, even though you're required to have it, it still counts as your, one of your accessory buildings. So this would say you can have two accessory buildings beyond a detached garage. If you don't have a detached garage, then you just get two in that. But again, it's figured on fifty percent of the primary structure and that's it. The limitation, there is a limitation in there of eight hundred and fifty square feet. So even if you have a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot house, you're still limited to eight hundred and fifty square feet, no matter what, for any single structure. The other change is related to lot size. For one acre and above, it takes that restriction away. So in a one acre and above, all it says is you can have no more than three accessory structures or four if you have a detached garage. So if you have a sixteen-hundred-square-foot house and want to put up a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot garage, you can in that. And again, that's for one acre and above. There's no fifty percent rule. The only limitation, again, is going to be lot coverage and the maximum number of accessory structures you have. So again, theoretically, if lot coverage was there, somebody could have three two-thousand-square-foot shops on their one-acre property in that. So again, I just want, you know, everybody to understand.
Where is that going to be? What are you talking about? Is that in town or?
Yes. No, yeah, any, any one-acre property in town. Now, the majority of one-acre properties, you know, most of you probably know, are in and around the lake area and south of town. Most of those are at one acre. There's a few that are under an acre, but the majority of them are one acre. And then along Sooner Road and some of those areas, you start seeing one and a half, two, up to five. I think there's even eight, nine acres. But the majority of lots that are in and around the lake area, there are around an acre. There's the one subdivision, I forget what roads there are. Most of those are actually in an acre because most of those are a half acre that's reported in an acre. But there's, again, the majority of these properties would be south of town and then around the lake. Because in our original platted area and that, because even Mission Hills, the average property there is about ten to fifteen thousand square feet in that. And even some of the combined lots you see in the other parts of town are mainly ten, fifteen thousand. So it would be for probably most of the lots that are south of town. However, if somebody else in the middle of town grouped up a bunch of lots and put it in an acre, they obviously could then have that there in that because it would meet the criteria. So it isn't like an overlay where it's limited. It's all based on lot size.
So what is the, what does that building need to consist of? I'm not really seeing that here.
That would be the same as what we have now. If you're within one of the overlays that were established, it's going to have to be architect, basically architecturally compatible. It cannot be metal. It has to have, you know, wood or, or, you know, brick or that type of siding in that it cannot be a metal. If you're outside the overlay, then it can be an all-metal building. And that's per the existing code and that is not changing. The only thing that was really is changing is how the, how the size is determined and where those sizes can be.
The overlay, for example, coming up Division, hundred and eighty feet in or whatever.
It was roughly a thousand feet each way along Noble and along Division. And then it also went in the northeast part a little bit, in and around where the temple is in that area. All of those areas cannot have metal in that. If you're outside of that area, so if you're like on Sooner Road down south, you're not in the overlay, you could have a metal building in that. And like I said, that overlay and those boundaries and all of that criteria have not changed. And the same thing, if you're in the historic district, you go to HPC. You know, they're going to regulate what you're going to need, what it's going to look like in that. So, and that, that verbiage is in there as well. And again, all that's staying the same.
But doesn't that overlay take into consideration what your zoning is?
No.
It doesn't?
No. It is strictly saying in this area, because this all pertains to residential and residential accessory structures. So if you have a residential use or a residentially-zoned property in that area and you want to put an accessory structure, these criteria there. And if you're in the overlay, you cannot have metal. So whether it's R-two, R-one, even C-two, because our code allows residential uses in a commercial.
Or agriculture. I don't see any of that.
No, that's different because there, the provisions for agriculture did not change. So in an agricultural area, you can have a metal building, and those did not change. And in fact, I think it's five acres and above, if I remember right. You don't even have to meet the, the size requirements and all of that. All of that is not changing. That's all in the existing code and it's staying the exact same. Again, the, the change comes into the, the number and the size. But the architectural requirements and the overlay, again, that's all the same, not changing at all. So, so that's pretty much, again, the biggest change in, in the residential accessory building part of it. And then finally, fences, walls, and hedges. This was, again, Uh, this was again, uh, primarily put in there because we had some of the fence criteria in the design standards, but we also had a separate section in the zoning code for fences. And so now it's just combining all that information into the existing or into the zoning code where it was. And there was really only two changes. One is we had some fences that were, uh, they were of a wood frame and they had woven wire or like a, a, it's probably more clearly a welded wire in that, that had large squares and it was a welded wire. We had gone to the commission in the past to have them determine whether or not that was appropriate. They had determined it was appropriate. So that's being added because of a previous determination that it was appropriate, uh, in that. But it would have to be a wood framed and it would have to be with the, the, you know, the. Yeah, more or less, but they're more welded, so they don't look really like cattle panels, but it's probably a good explanation. Oh, yeah, it's, it's. It's like a wa- welded wire is really what it is, cause it's not even a woven wire, it's a welded wire. But it's a thicker wire, a thicker gauge, and it almost looks like a, a livestock panel to some extent, cause it has the larger squares. But to me, I, it, you know, I, it's not, I guess, as in slightly, but it had wood frames around it. The other, the other part that was being added is currently our code doesn't allow chain link at all. There are a number of properties in town that have chain link, there's no doubt about it. The thing is, is we don't have a permitting process to oversee that or regulate it. So we have people who put in, uh, and, and most of them honestly don't know any different, so they're not like, you know, blatantly break, breaking the law by any means, but put in a chain link fence. The problem is, we don't know when it was put in, so we really can't go after them on a code enforcement basis to say, that was put in yesterday, you need to take it down if they tell us, I've had that for ten years. And so, so for the most part, there's fence that has gone up and it hasn't been, if you want to say strictly, I guess, enforced in that. However, this code amendment would allow it to be in a backyard. So if you wanted to put chain link fence in your backyard, you could. It would still prohibit it from being in the front, uh, yard or, uh, in that, or even on the side yard for that matter. It would have to be in the backyard or the rear yard, so behind your house, uh, in that, but it would be on allowed use, which, and I think most, all, I can't say all, but I can tell you a vast majority of the fences that are out there are in the backyard. There's not a whole lot of them that are in the front yard. Most of them are all in the backyard, so, uh, it's just an element in the code that's being added that actually would, you know, uh, if you want to say legalize it where previously it was not. So with all of that long-winded stuff, oh, sure.
Question.
Yes, mayor.
Um, the, talk to me about the fifty percent visibility, that's not the right terminology to use. Um, but I was interpreting that they're talking, uh, if you're using a wood fence.
Mm-hmm. Uh. Oh, I, thank you very much, Ms.
To be fifty percent visibility through the fence.
Yes, I, and, and, and I apologize because that was the other, uh, change, so thank you, mayor. Uh, yeah, right now our current, uh, or the, the code currently has a thirty percent opaque requirement, meaning that it has to be no more, the gap can be no more than a thirty percent. Well, most of the picket fences out there honestly are a slat, the same amount of space gap, another slat, so it's basically at a fifty percent. Because a lot of them would, would actually require those, uh, pa- uh, panels or those planks, if you want to say, to be much closer than they are. But most of them that put up even a picket type fence have, again, a slat, the same amount of distance in between the slat, another slat. So again, it's about a fifty percent. Right now at a thirty percent, it would require them to get closer. To be honest, it's very hard to go out and try to regulate a fence without spending time with a measuring stick and going, well, you're at, you know, thirty-five percent or forty percent. So one of the ways to make it easy and is much more visible, you can clearly see a slat about the same room, a slat about the same room, and so it's at a fifty percent. So that's what that is, is, uh, doing, is allowing that gap between the slats to be a little bit wider.
So they want to.
Privacy, where the girls can all walk in.
In your backyard you can, but in your front yard you cannot. And that's current code, cause currently the code does not allow a view obscuring fence in the front yard. Uh, in that, in fact, it limits it to four feet in height, period. And then it can't be view obscuring. If you want a taller fence up to the six or seven foot that the code allows in view obscuring, it has to be in the backyard. Yeah, current code doesn't allow it in the front yard, and that's not changing.
But they'll allow like the white picket fence with the gate.
Yeah, and that's where the opaque part comes in, so when you have that picket fence now technically, you can have fifty percent between the slats rather than the thirty.
So ten years from now, when we're all dead and gone, this is going to be where they'll know that.
It's where they'll know that, yeah.
So, and the fifty percent, if they want more, they can, but not left.
No, it, it would have to stay basically at the fifty percent. If they wanted more, it could not be. We're just increasing it a little bit more to be no more than fifty percent. If they wanted less, they could.
Fifty percent of the slat.
Yeah.
Slats is what.
Yeah.
After that, you can get the next one.
Exactly, that's what it's doing. Cause it's a lot easier, like I said, even for us to regulate visually to go, yeah, it's about fifty percent. Cause at thirty percent or something like that, literally the only way to do it is if we're starting to major stuff. Yeah, so it's just a lot easier.
Well, so what about those white picket fences? Aren't they only like a couple inches wide or not even that? I don't know.
There's some.
Just seems like they're just real skinny, so you can have like a half inch gap.
A lot of those are probably at fifty percent. There's some that might be less and there's some that might actually be more. But the majority of them, when they put it up, like I said, they'll put a slat, the equal amount of width of the.
From another slat.
Another slat in that, which again is, is roughly a fifty percent. Now, some of the slats may be a little lessened width, so you know, you might have a four inch slat versus a six inch slat or something like that. But the spacing will be consistent, you know, no matter what, by using that method, so.
And what was the logic for that?
A lot of the logic was that's generally what's kind of out there right now. And even from an enforcement standpoint, it's a lot easier to si- sit there and visualize, that's about fifty percent.
I understand, but what is the logic for having to be able to see through the fence?
You know, that, that's always been something that's in, in Guthrie, you know, that they've had it. And, and again, I think a lot of it is, is they did not want the front yards to be blocked off in terms of, of, uh, having a, for lack of better terms, a compound in the front yard. Where you drive by and you just see fences. Right, and so that's why there was, right, a limitation on the height of the fence as well as the amount of opaqueness you can have in that fence. So when you drive by, you're like, ooh, that's a nice house, and, but yet you can have a fence to maybe keep your animals in or your kids in and that. But again, they didn't want a six or seven foot basically wall that you can't see through to block off the entire front of your house. And so that's generally why that was, I'm sure that was in there, and that's also generally why we would want to continue that, so we don't have wall off front yards. So that pretty much sums up everything. I think I hit every main point, uh, in that, so I'll give it back to the council now if you have.
Let's talk about the commercial buildings one more time.
Oh, I'm not going to sit down.
Let's, let's talk about the commercial. Right now it's forty percent, or it could be sixty percent metal, forty percent other, and we're making it, we're flipping it. Or sixty and no metal on commercial?
No, it's not no metal, it would be ten percent.
Ten percent.
Yeah, but what it is requiring is of that sixty percent, it has to be brick. The other forty percent could be any other material up to ten percent metal.
But what if they're off in an area that's city limits, but they're still not really anywhere near brick buildings or anywhere near the city? Cause there is a lot of that.
No, there's a lot of metal buildings, yes.
There's a ton of them.
Yeah, and, and, and I, and I will say this, in, in that, and even Leroy and I talked about this. These type of standards are a community preference. There is no right or wrong answer. It's what we want as a community in terms of the aesthetics of our buildings, whether it's the commercial side, the residential side. Cause, you know, much like I said with the signs, you can go to any zoning code and there'll be some that have very limited, if any, architectural standards. There's some that have page after page, a very specific architectural standard, and there's some in between. It's again, it's all what the community would desire and want in the type of their buildings, the aesthetics of their buildings, and even on, again, the residential side. So if the council feels that that's too much or too restrictive, you know, that's fine. We, we can say, you know, leave it at sixty, forty, and just say, we want more architectural value, if you want to say, of the buildings. We don't want flat facades, but they could still have metal. You know, again, there's a whole multitude of ways that it can be regulated, but it, again, comes back down to what we want as a typical building.
What you've come up with there is relatively what we already have.
To some extent.
Now, it's now we're hearing.
I, I will tell you that one of the, the underlying things of probably why, you know, I was even thinking in that regard is, is obviously bricks have always been a big part of Guthrie's history. We have a downtown that obviously that's how all the original buildings were, were built. I know there's been some desire, uh, from public and others to see more brick in some instances in that. So it was kind of one of those things where we could throw that out there and get more brick, but not to the point where we're going to require a hundred percent brick of every building in town and all that. And really kind of as a, if you want to say, a starting point. And again, if there's a desire to back off of that to some extent, then that's fine. You know, it could be forty percent brick, it could be, you know, no requirement of brick, it could be, again, just any of the exterior.
Again, that's outside of this order.
Yes, right, right, cause the historic district is a whole thing in itself that is under the historic preservation ordinance and is entirely separate, right.
So how do you like, wouldn't, I'm, there's, most of the buildings that are already, that are there are already built. Up divi- I'm talking about up and down division. Meridian Tech, for example, is that a hundred percent brick?
No.
Okay, there you go. You can have a monster out there that's nowhere near a hundred percent brick, or not even sixty.
No, it has very little brick.
Exactly.
Express Wellness is another one.
So, uh, you know, we're, and that's not even broke, that, they just broke ground.
Yes.
So we put this ordinance together, they get grandfathered? That's how that works?
Yeah, with any, with any of it, you know, any, anytime you put a new ordinance in place, any other property that was legally done through the permitting process becomes a legal non-conforming use. So we don't go out and say, you know, you have to come up to code. But obviously there's a certain criteria to where they lose that, can lose that legal non-conforming status and that, but yeah, they would be grandfathered in. Cause we have that even with a lot of the current design standards.
Yeah, so why wouldn't we look at a footprint like we're looking at an offset footprint going down south division for buildings, for, you know, on residential buildings for that matter? Why wouldn't we look for a footprint closer to the brick part of Guthrie? Because you're not going to find any brick between I thirty-five and industrial, pretty much. Okay, it's already, it's built, it's already there. But there still is places that can be built. Now, they're going to have to go brick, but yet places like Meridian, which is massive, are going to be all metal.
Yeah, they're, yeah, I mean, like Meridian's not all metal, they have.
Well, you know what I mean, and it's going to cost a heck of a lot more to come in and do, if they, to, you might as well just do all brick. It might as well just be a mandate for all brick, cause it's going to cost more to come in and stuck Owen metal if you wanted to take the other thirty percent, forty percent.
Yeah.
So you, we're basically mandating brick, is what we're mandating.
Yeah, to some extent, you're right, but it does leave some room to have some, like I said, it, I, I like to say.
It's going to be cost prohibitive, though.
I, he, I won't argue that.
Yeah, it will be.
Uh, yeah, I, I, in other jurisdictions that I worked, in other cities I worked, I'll just say that that argument has come up significantly. And, you know, there's some instances where that may apply, but I can tell you the vast majority of instances, it really doesn't apply. But again, that's.
So, but what we're doing is, aren't we kind of handcuffing commercial industry? And when we want to promote commercial industry, because what we're doing is we're making them put all this brick, which, hey, I'm a fan of doing some brick like that, don't get me wrong. But putting all this brick and then leaving ten to thirty percent that's not brick, which is going to be cost prohibitive for them to do, they may not even build here because of that.
They don't have to do anything, they could do total brick if they wanted.
Right, or they could do, uh.
Sixty, forty.
Sixty, forty, they could do forty percent met- uh, brick and sixty percent metal.
It allows them to do EFS or some other type of design.
Yeah, stone or.
Just like the monument deal out there? That's about a forty percent, if that, not even. Okay, I think that what we're doing is we're trying to, we're going to squelch, uh, progress is what we're going to do, to a degree.
I don't think so.
We're going to tie the hands, because you're not going to go build that and spend that money, you're going to go somewhere else and do it.
No, cause most communities are coming to that, Brian.
Okay, well, what's that meant?
If you go to, if you go to our, go to our.
They have very similar, or, yeah, I, I will say that a lot of communities around here, especially in the metro area, have, uh, similar, uh, requirements. Now, what a lot of them have done is just like we've done with the residential in the northern part, is create overlay districts.
That's what I've been to.
So if you look at Oklahoma City and a lot of those, they probably have eight to ten different overlay districts, cause each of them have a little bit different criteria in what they're desiring or wanting. You know, obviously we're only a town of around twelve thousand people, so I don't think we need eight or ten different, uh, you know, overlay districts. But that's what I was going to say, is you're kind of talking about maybe having another overlay district, so we cover more in and around the downtown that is.
And I can, and I get that, I do, I get that big time.
But I will say that, yeah, uh, there, in, 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 in doing the zoning code update, as well as this, I can tell you, I probably looked at forty different jurisdictions, at least, uh, zoning codes and a lot of their requirements. And they were all in the state of Oklahoma, from the big cities in Oklahoma area to the Tulsa area, to small towns, to out west Clinton and up north, you know, Barnesville. I, you know, uh, again, you, you name a city, I probably have seen their zoning code. And, uh, a good portion of them, you know, have, uh, fairly decent requirements for their, um, for their architectural design in terms of what they want. Now, obviously some of the difference is probably on, on the percentage, cause a lot of them still have where we want something that's architecturally relevant. Uh, and again, I go back to, we don't want a square building with just EFS siding in that, and, and that's what a lot of the codes have. Most of them say, you know, you can do whatever you want, whether it's brick or if, you know, even portions are metal or that, but we want at least some architectural character to it, so we don't, again, have just a square building, uh, in that, we, in, in that type of thing.
I know, I'm just saying, and I, and I agree with you a hundred percent on how it should be, with the exception of when you get to Walmart and head south. Progress is already done out there, except there are some areas that could be built upon, and now we're making this mandate that they're going to have to do this right, and it not, it's not a mandate yet, but it will be, uh, they're going to.
Talking about the entrance corridors, you got to be too.
It's already done.
Yeah, but there's not to say.
Drive out there. They're not going to bulldoze those and re-brick them.
No.
Okay. Exactly, but there still are some places that could be built and we're going to tie the hands of those particular, that particular industry, whatever's going to go there.
Yeah, and, and again, I, I'll go back, there's no right or wrong answer, and if it's the desire of the council to.
Leroy's.
Yeah, to lessen the criteria, that's fine.
On the commercial property, at least the way I read this ordinance, it's any commercial property anywhere in town. It's not just.
That's what we're talking, that's, that's right.
It's anywhere in town that's commercial, you've got to meet that standard.
Right, that's what we're talking about.
And that's why I was saying that if we had, if.
But ninety percent of the buildings out there don't even come close.
Right.
And it's probably eighty percent built, between Walmart and I thirty-five.
But the, but the way to regulate that, if there's a desire to have, again, some areas that we want a little bit more stringent versus other areas, again, would be going through creating the overlay districts to regulate that. Cause yes, as it's set up, it applies to any commercial property in the city limits of Guthrie.
Right.
Uh, as we talked about the residential for the Victorian.
I get that.
Yeah, that's specific to that area that was, is mapped out. So again, if the council would desire, you know, we can go that route. Yeah, okay.
So what, what about when we do the industrial park?
Once again, there's an exception in there, that if you're in, in, if you're in industrial and you're not on the division corridor, you can be all metal.
That's far enough out of town anyway.
Yeah, right, cause the industrial properties, you can have all metal if you wanted, uh, in that. Again, with the exception if you're fronting or adjacent to the division, uh, corridor. Yeah.
Well, same deal, if, if I build a new shop next to the convenience center, I got to have sixty percent brick.
Yes, if it's commercial, I don't know, I don't.
Do you want a motion?
Well, well, you know, again, like I said, I, I'm, I'll, I'll kind of stop, but it, it's, it's really up to you guys in terms of what you desire and want. Because again, I, I'm repeating myself, but there's no right or wrong answer.
Yeah, but if somebody.
It's what we want as a community, and if we would rather keep the standards we have, sixty, forty, that's fine. You know, there's absolutely nothing wrong with that.
All right, I'll take a motion to, uh, two wardens, three, 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 three.
Yeah, I think we got more to.
I, I have some comments if I may.
You can. You can.
Well, he's getting these notes together and knows what he wants, like, and then.
Oh, yes.
We all know where the new house that burned first, where the house that burned over by St. Louis.
Uh, Noble.
When they put it back in there, I don't know, but it looks nice. If we put this in place, that house could not exist, because that house is not colonial, it's not Victorian, and it's not a bungalow.
If I can clarify.
Okay.
Councilman General.
All right.
That was as a, you know, that was roughly as a dance. So it would not have to meet a particular Victorian colonial or that to an absolute T. Actually, that house, with the exception of maybe a couple of things, would meet a lot of the current criteria we have. And we actually have some other developers in town that are looking to build even on division, that have homes that actually would fit under the current ordinance in terms of what we require. They're a two-story, they have some architecture to it. The whole idea, to be honest with you, is we didn't want a standard, it was to not have a standard kind of ranch, you know, long ranch style home that, you know, has.
Let me go over that.
Yeah, well, yeah, they're, they're right, there's probably a couple in there, yeah. But so again, there.
You don't want a ranch home where the bungalows are.
There is a lot of leeway in that, and, and that. And that's also why ultimately it could go to the planning commission. If a person wants to build a house and they don't agree with staff, it can go to the planning commission and they can say, no, I think that's, uh, close enough to meet the, you know, the requirement.
I just feel like that button holds down pretty, pretty tight.
And I think it should, Don, especially if you're looking at historical home districts. That house that was built currently, as nice as it is, it sticks out like a sore thumb.
How historical is Fifteenth and Logan?
We're not talking about Fifteenth and Logan, we're talking about, we're talking about, uh, the corridor.
At Fifteenth and Logan, they couldn't build something unless it was one of those three, according to the overlay.
Oh, no, yes.
The overlay that he has goes about three blocks north of Thirty-three or Noble.
Sure.
And it goes about three blocks south. Well, at Fifteenth and Cleveland, you couldn't build anything except one of those.
I just don't think you want a bunch of Dallas-style looking homes over there. I mean, that's not what's there.
You want something that fits.
Fits the rest of the neighborhood.
Exactly.
Are people putting up Dallas-style ranch homes over there?
I haven't seen it.
Well, there's one right across from the temple right now that's got an attached forward-facing garage that also sticks out like a sore thumb. It's a nice house, but it doesn't fit the neighborhood.
Shouldn't that be done on a case-by-case basis when they come to get their permits?
We, we have no way to regulate, that's the whole problem.
You can't deny a permit if you don't have a regulation.
It has to match. Basically, all our code says is it has to line up as a block. So if the house is, the current house is maybe only twenty feet and the current setback says twenty-five, the code says, no, line it up at twenty, because we want to keep everything lined up. But it doesn't say you have to make it architecturally compatible or have that, again, colonial-Victorian-type architecture with that home. You could bring a basic, you know, block house, I guess, in there and put it there, and that's fine, as long as you line it up. So that was kind of the premise behind that, is so we can kind of go to the next step to make sure that we do get ones that are more compatible with that originally built area.
I think if you're gonna err, you wanna err on the conservative side, rather than putting an ultra-modern house in the middle of.
Yeah.
Well, and I've seen a couple of those in the village where they came in and put some ultra-modern houses, and actually, it transformed the entire street. Okay.
I say, be in any basic. Somebody lives in their house thirty years and it burns down, and they go, I've always wanted a craftsman house. I'm gonna rebuild it as a craftsman. And Dan says, no, it's gonna be colonial or Victorian.
Well, but I get, that's not the point. I, I see his point in that, I really truly do.
But that's when you could, you could file for a, um.
A variance?
A variance, yeah.
No, not according to that.
Well, no, you can go to the planning commission to get exceptions, yes.
They're not gonna give an exception once this is in.
But, but what I'm saying, that's why if you really read the code, it says that those are examples. It doesn't say you absolutely have to meet that particular, you know, if you want to say, style or what the pictures, it's given as examples. The only requirements that have to be met are the few that were put in there, where you have to have a porch, you have to have a certain amount of windows and that type of thing, but it doesn't.
Well, let's just mark those three out.
The what? Oh.
The colonial.
Well, it was given, like I said, as an example, so there's an understanding of what wants to be, because that's basically the styles that are.
Well, this is a hill building, I think it can mean these three houses right here.
No, right.
Fifteen years from now, nobody's gonna know what Dan went with an exact whole third building.
You could have put it in the.
Right here, it's. We all know that.
But I see you don't want a ranch in the middle of a bungalow neighborhood.
Yeah, I'm gonna say, I won't.
Everybody had comments?
Yeah. Yeah, that's why I wrote that. The purpose of ordinance, uh, as Dan's already explained, some of my comments will overlap some. When the design standards were adopted back in nineteen ninety-nine, they were put in chapter four of the building code. So we're taking them out of the building code, and that's what the repeal part is. And the zoning ordinance is adopted by reference in the chapter sixteen, planning and zoning. So we're moving the standards to chapter sixteen. And then some of the, uh, architectural standards that were adopted in nineteen ninety-nine were amended. And then we're adding some new ones. And my comments pertain to both the existing standards that we're moving, some of the amended or new standards Dan's proposing, and then some of mine are just being a devil's advocate to examine the validity or details of select provisions. Some of my guiding principles that I think we all look at is, if you're not gonna enforce it, if you don't enforce, don't adopt. Uh, existing provisions in the original ordinance that have not been uniformly enforced should be reviewed for deletion. Uh, don't adopt new standards that we're not comfortable uniform, uniformly enforcing. If we make a standard, you can't have people running planning commission to get an exception. You get, you got to apply them uniformly unless there is a hardship similar to getting an exception or variance in front of, uh, the Board of, uh, Adjustments. So if we're not gonna enforce it, don't adopt it. The, uh, consider the social-economic characteristics of our community. Do these standards allow ample opportunity to construct affordable housing, both single-family and market-rate multifamily? When I say mar- market-rate multifamily, I'm not saying tax credit, market rate. So are we allowing any place, because we're making these standards community-wide, are we ensuring that we got some areas that we can have some housing inside city Guthrie that's targeted towards affordable housing? Business and industry, do these standards allow ample opportunity to recruit a wide array of business and industry? Some industries are gonna have different financial situations. And then when should the city set design standards versus letting the market, uh, drive demand? Sometimes that's a tough question. On going from the two garages to a single garage, I think the marketplace will drive that. If I'm gonna build a new subdivision and houses are gonna be two to three hundred thousand dollars, I'm not gonna put a single-car garage on those. The market demand will tell me if I'm gonna sell those houses, I've gotta have a two or three garage. So I don't have a problem with that change, because I think the market will take care of that. In the section six point one, and my page numbers may be different in your packet, but it's page two of the ordinance, new residential structures must have a minimum forty-eight-inch sidewalk. We have not historically, since the nineties, enforced that. And I'll give you an example of one place that it becomes tough. You've got an infill lot and none of the other lots on that block have a sidewalk. But that says you gotta have a forty-eight-inch sidewalk for any new structure. So you're gonna have a sidewalk on one lot, three lots none on one side and three lots none on the other. But if that says forty-eight inches, that's the way it'll be enforced.
What's the ADA standard?
ADA? If you build a sidewalk, it's gotta meet ADA standards.
Forty.
Forty-eight.
Well, I think the general answer to that is you go to planning and get a variance, right? That's what I'm hearing.
It only depends on whether, it's, it's just like the Board of Adjustments. They have specific things they can give a variance for. They can't just give a variance for whatever they decide. There, there are specific things. And, and that was, one of my concerns on Dan's ordinance. And by the way, I will tell you, because I'm not being critical of Dan, because I think he's done a good job, he's showing a lot of knowledge on planning, and I'm glad I don't have to be as involved in planning anymore since we are Dan. And so I, I will make sure I'm very complimentary. On Dan's ordinance, when I get to it, where he gives, basically, and he tried to correct it tonight, but where he gives the planning commission carte blanche unilateral authority to, to change any of this, why have we adopted it if they can change any of it?
Well, that's what.
It, it has to be like Dan did tonight. If we're gonna give them authority to make any changes, we have to specifically limit or identify the areas where they can make exceptions, not the whole document. If we say you can only have two outbuildings, three of us garage, we don't want the planning commission, oh, well, Johnny needs four outbuildings, let's approve that. That's not the way it should work. So anyway, if we adopt it, it needs to be uniformly applied. Again, I talked about the garages, uh, going from, uh, two to a minimum of one, I think, the marketplace. One of my concerns on the garages, though, is the second one. Uh, the garage cannot protrude forth of the front facade, uh, which is commonly referred to as a snout house. And a snout house is a house with a protruding garage that takes up most of the street frontage. But our standard is saying you cannot go past the front of the facade. That's a picture of my house. And I had to explain to my wife over the weekend that our house is no longer architecturally or socially acceptable in Guthrie.
Well, again, I think you have to have that overlay, because I think what we're trying to talk about is the historical part neighborhoods down there. Aren't we?
No.
We're just talking the whole, everything.
Everywhere.
Yeah, and that's in the, and that's in the current.
That's what we've been living with for ten years. I've been in the ordinance for ten years.
No, I get it, but I'm just saying, okay, well, those houses aren't.
No, they don't.
So, so much for that.
Well, my subdivision, which is one of the newer subdivisions, was built prior to the ordinance being adopted. But proponents of eliminating stout, snout houses or houses where the garage protrude, aesthetics curb appeal, prominent garages send messages that cars, not people, occupy the neighborhood, uh, diminished sense of community, creating an unwelcome atmosphere for neighbors to interact, uh, style may hamper safety and security by block of views to and from the street, uh, such developments are less friendly to pedestrians. So there's a lot of positives of why you wanna do that. But then supporters of that, uh, will tell you such design is typically utilized to make a dwelling more affordable. You can build them on smaller lots. Today, most families have two vehicles and they are much bigger than in days past. The only way to construct a two-car garage on a narrow lot to house two SUVs is to do this type of construction for the most part. If you can't have that, then if, if you eliminate this totally, does that mean we're gonna force people to have larger lots so they can accommodate this? Are we talking about subdivisions now will have to have alleys so you can have back entrances? Cost, urban sprawl? I don't think we want to create more urban sprawl. So should the city let the market drive the demand? Each subdivision developer could utilize a housing design geared towards their target audience. If they got a more upscale target audience, they would do the houses that didn't have garage protruding. If they were doing for more moderate or lower, then they would do smaller lots and they would have the garages come for. Now, do you want the garages twenty feet out from the front of the house? Maybe there's a halfway medium there, but to just point-blank say the garage cannot come out past front of the house, I don't know if that's the best decision. Okay.
Well, I think it's a good decision in the, in an overlay scenario with the historical part of these bungalows and stuff. But Mission Hills, you got two-hundred-thousand-dollar houses in there, and I think they're all in the front of the house.
The next thing I have is on, uh, materials, exterior. Says exterior shall be building materials, and this is residential steel, similar to materials of structures in the city, stone, brick, wood, or wood simulated siding. Sometimes I'm not exactly sure what wood simulate means, because if you ask different staff at different times, not Dan, he's consistent, they give you different definitions of what wood simulate means. Uh, who determines? Is there no room in Guthrie for aluminum, steel, vinyl siding, or fiber cement board? You're not allowed. And there's some nice homes that have aluminum or steel siding.
Fiber cement board, isn't that wood simulated?
It can be, it can be. Uh, stucco is one of the most popular exterior finishes for homes. It's an attractive, low-maintenance and far-resistant, uh, siding.
But it's more indicative of, uh, maybe a more desert style. And here we have a very old Victorian.
So this house on the bottom right is a stucco house that has some brick or some finish. There's no place for that house in Guthrie? Are we saying that that house can't exist in Guthrie?
But you were talking stucco, that looks more like a, that doesn't look like.
That is a.
Well, there's a, there's a house, there's a house on Noble. It's a four sto-, or, it's a two-story, four-square-style home, and it's completely stucco, and it looks very nice, it's very attractive.
Really, right, and it's been the stucco ever.
And, and Dan didn't change this, this is existing ordinance I'm talking about, that just got moved. But I'm just asking, is this, is there no room in this community for aluminum or steel or vinyl siding or fibers?
Well, what about the home Leroy that already has it and they're trying to replace, say, a whole wall of it? Okay, now you can't?
Well, then we can't.
Uh, no, okay, is it?
Unless they do fifty percent of all.
I was gonna say, it all comes back to whether or not you lose your legal life in forty.
Yeah, so.
And again, I'm just asking questions, because I wanna make sure if you adopt something, you know what you're adopting, because I don't want me and Dan and others to have to enforce this and, well, wait a minute, you know.
There's a lot of, I, I would think that a lot of these two-story houses, James, you would know more. Don't they have some type of siding under the soffits typically? There's a lot of fascia soffit, uh, type siding going on? None of that'll exist.
Okay, in the Guthrie proper overlay district residential architectural design standards, the architecture of residential structures within this district shall be compatible with adjacent properties and/or. Okay, the first part, compatible with adjacent properties. What does this exactly mean and whose interpretation? What if I got a shack on this side that's been there for a hundred years? And then I got a, uh, a colonial house on this side? Or, or, you know, it's a mix. Well, what is, what does it mean, adjacent properties? If it's a shack, then I don't have to follow this? Just asking questions. And then it says be compatible with architectural styles periods commonly known as. If we're gonna say those are just example, then I think they, it ought to be inclusive of, but not limited to. If there will be examples. If there are gonna be those three, then that wording's right. But if we're saying those are examples, then I think it ought to say inclusive of, but not limited to those three.
There's a lot of.
I mean, there's a lot of craftsman-style homes built in Guthrie.
Yes. And we eliminated those.
Leave that.
And then as you all indicated, it's a pretty big area. And then as Dan indicated, you know, you gotta have the front porch. I didn't even know, of course, you know, I've only got four college degrees. I didn't even know what that first word, fetishation?
Administration.
Administration, I didn't even know what that meant. I had to look it up, I'm the one that put the. Administration. I didn't even know what that meant. I had to look it up. I'm the one that put the, uh, the, uh, definition in there for, for guys like me that grew up on the farm. Uh, but you gotta have twenty-five percent of windows, doors, and skylights. Uh, and no more than seventy percent. Garage, again, uh, single stall required. Again, I think that will, uh, market will take care of that. Uh, my only concern on detached garage, if they have to be in the rear, what if there's no alley and it's a narrow lot? Uh, there may be times that that's not feasible. Uh, and then the attached garages have to be twenty feet back. I can understand in this area why you might do that. The exterior, building materials, same question is for, you know, is there room for some other types of materials? Um. The, now to commercial, the provisions of the commercial industrial design standards here will apply to any commercial and industrial zone property. Now, we do go on later to make an exception on the industrial zone property that's outside of the, uh, Noble and, uh, highway, uh-
Yeah, basically.
Division, Noble. It's, it, when you combine those, it's both overlay district along Noble and Division. Um, so the, anywhere in the city Guthrie, not just along that corridor. That's zone commercial. Now, if this is adopted, will have to be at a minimum sixty percent brick. All elevations visible to public shall also include architectural design elements. Metal panels may be allowed only when incorporated as a design, design element and limited to ten percent. So sixty percent brick, ten percent metal, thirty percent of the other materials, stone, cast, stone, brick, uh, or equivalent masonry, stucco. Uh, the old one, and that's everywhere in town. Uh, previously, it was metal exterior materials could not exceed sixty percent. And the design may have to be balanced and aesthetically pleasing. All metal exterior buildings are allowed only in the industrial zones. That's what we have now, but we're going to flip from sixty percent metal to, uh, the, uh, sixty percent brick. Well, no, ten percent.
Yeah, ten.
Um, my thoughts are I can very easily understand and promote the ideal that on the corridors. That any new construction on a commercial or industrial that is on our main corridors. Noble, Division, higher standards, whether it's ninety percent other materials, then it's a ten percent metal. Maybe that may be a little high, but surely there's someplace in Guthrie that you can still build a nice looking building that's sixty percent metal. Surely there's somewhere in Guthrie, uh, for commercial development.
Well, yeah, Meridian technology.
Again, in industrial, uh, buildings within industrial zones that front a right-of-way within the main corridor over the district are subject to all the provisions of section six-two B, uh, four at building exterior. Buildings not located in main corridor are exempt from the requirements of six-two B four. Um, so my question, are there any building exterior standards for industrial buildings outside of the, the bangoverly district? I didn't see anything. They do whatever.
It just goes back to having some type of architectural character, but on the exterior, it could be all.
I'm about through.
So-
Exceptions to architectural design standards. The planning commission may approve modifications or exceptions to residential, commercial, or industrial architectural design standards within section six-point-one and six-two for properties not within the historic district. When there is justification due to the uniqueness of a project, site limitations, and/or design. So the city council's adopting, if you adopt these, these new design standards are modified design standards because some of them existed. But then you're given the planning commission unilateral authority to modify and make exceptions as they deem appropriate. Is there any hardship criteria for an exception from the planning commission similar to the standard for variance for Board of Adjustments? Right now, there's not. How do you know when there's a justification? What is the standard? If you look at the Board of Adjustment, their authority is limited to specific areas that they can give a variance. As Dan in his notes that he gave Kim, he's, he, he's trying to do that. I think the planning commission's authority to make adjustments or give variance or exceptions should be limited to specific provisions. Like I said earlier, we say you could have two outbuildings, or if you have a, a standalone garage, three outbuildings. Do you want them to say, well, over here where you could have four? So there's gotta be some limitations on what the planning commission can do to vary from this ordinance. Just like we do for the Board of Adjustments.
What I heard was that that only pertains to the architectural element of the-
That's what that is.
Everything we're talking about is in section six-one, one, and six-one-two.
With the amendment that he was sending-
I haven't had a chance to look at that amendment. I'll go by, my presentation is based on the ordinance that was presented.
But accessory buildings was not in six-one or six-two?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if you limit that, I'm, I'm more comfortable, but, but there's gotta be some limitations. Okay, now, on accessory buildings. The minimum floor area of an accessory structure shall not exceed fifty percent of the primary structurable, structures livable area or eight-hundred-and-fifty feet, which is less. Now, my understanding, that's both first floor and second floor. Whereas before, the ordinance limited it to your footprint. Now, if you got a two-story house, you would take the livable area of both. And I guess you wouldn't consider the garage anymore, attached garage. Um, so you could have, if you have a, a large enough lot, you could have three buildings, two outbuildings and a standalone garage, each of eight-hundred-and-fifty square feet. They'd only be limited by the size of your lot. So if you got a hundred-by-hundred lot, ten thousand square feet, you're limited to only building on twenty-five percent of that lot. So you got twenty-five hundred square feet you can work with. So seven, if you have a seventeen-hundred-square-foot home where you normally could have an eight-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot outbuilding, then you could only build an eight-hundred-square-foot outbuilding. And yet, that would be your limit on a ten-thousand-square-foot lot. Uh, my lot's a small, I can't build any outbuilding. Maybe a doghouse. Because it would cover more than twenty-five percent. Because when you take the size of my house. Well, now that you're taking the garage out of it, I may build a billboard. Now, if twenty-five percent counts the garage, though, doesn't it?
Yeah, total footprint.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
The only thing the garage is not figured in is the livable area because it's based on livable area.
Yeah.
Are we even policing this?
I mean, if somebody decides to go to Home Depot and buy a tough shed.
Yes, I can tell you since I've been here in that, uh, in fact, one of the reasons the accessory structures ordinance came up is a lot of people cannot have accessory structures at all. And a lot of them could not even meet our two-garage minimum requirement because they have a small lot. So we were having continued problems with people trying to develop a property with basic stuff that they could not. So we look at lot coverage, we look at everything when it comes in.
Yeah.
And we become aware of people putting in garages or accessory structures. And we've had a few of them that, you know, kind of got sticky, so to speak, because they did it before, uh, they got permits.
So you deal with two standards.
So you have to get a permit before you bring in a, a portable building?
If it's over a hundred-and-twenty square feet, yes. Because per the building code, you can have a hundred-and-twenty square feet or less and you do not need a building permit. Anything greater than that requires a building permit.
But you, you still shouldn't violate the twenty-five percent. So, so, um, determining how many square feet you can have for an accessory building based on livable area. Both first and second floors, it doesn't include the garage, but when we calculate the twenty-five percent, it includes the-
Total footprint.
Footprint of the, the main floor, which would include the garage, the other one doesn't. On a hundred-by-two-hundred lot, twenty thousand square feet, twenty percent coverage. And, and that's roughly half acre, five thousand square feet. So I could have a seventeen-hundred-square-foot home. And I'd be limited to three eight-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot outbuildings if one of them was attached garage. So on that size lot, I could have three eight-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot outbuildings.
Wouldn't it be more aesthetically pleasing to just have one at twenty-five hundred square feet?
Doesn't, doesn't allow that.
That's an argument because that's one of the things-
Because that's what people complained about in the past, having all these storage sheds with a little connection between.
Right, because I will say that's why there was still a limitation on it to, you know, the two and the three. Because you're right, you get people that could build, you know, ten, two-hundred-square-foot, uh, things. Because again, lot coverage is one of the main factors that is going to, uh, regulate it.
On the one acre, there's no limitation on the size floor area of an accessory structure. So one acre, forty-three thousand square feet, limited to forty-five percent lot coverage, that gives you ten thousand eight-hundred-and-ninety square feet. If you have a two-thousand-square-foot home, you could have an eight-thousand-square-foot outbuilding. There's some places in town where there are developments of one acre each that I don't think that it would be appropriate for eight-thousand-square-foot outbuilding overshadowing the rest, overshadowing the rest of the neighborhood. Might not be appropriate. Those are just questions I bring to you to think about as you work through this ordinance. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Leroy.
Dan, is it possible to go? No, no, I'm going to go.
Well, I think there's definitely room somewhere in Guthrie, especially when you go out towards the lake. And I think there, there may be some lots that would be smaller than an acre. It doesn't even matter if it's larger than an acre at this point. Uh, or maybe it does, but barn dominiums have really become in fashion and can be very, very nice. In fact, there are, there's one on South Sooner Road. I don't, I would think that we could make a place for those. I would think that we could make a, I mean-
But they're metal.
They are metal. I understand that. I mean, I don't, I wouldn't want one right next to my house necessarily because that's not what my neighborhood is. But in an area that's not-
There are some nice, I've seen them.
But James, in the location, 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 and should it be, locations be governed by, uh, depending on that overlay like房子?
Sure, but-
The, the question is that, that, uh- You almost want to find where you can buy an actual standards at all.
Well, he, he-
Different places and, you know, it's not, it's not dependent on where it's located. It's more, um, they're trying to, you know.
I mean, I think there's even areas of town, if you take the southeast quadrant of town, where there's been so much that's been knocked down or nonexistent. There's really no neighborhood presence there anymore. If someone bought a bunch of those lots and decided they wanted to make a, a modern block. I wouldn't have a problem with that if they wanted to build a bunch of contemporary houses next door to one, one another. Because there is no neighborhood identity anymore. But I think when you still have a neighborhood identity, you need to be cognizant of what that neighborhood looks like and be complimentary of that. I, I mean-
But it, it's still, it's still maybe a little bit, you still need to look at what other existing structures might be there.
I mean, Heritage Hills, and I regret it, we're not Heritage Hills, but they haven't maintained their value and their integrity of their neighborhood by just allowing someone to build a ranch-style neighborhood. You know what I mean? I mean, we've got, I mean, we have homes of that caliber. We have homes in our, uh, on Noble and in some of these corridors that are of that caliber. That we, we wanna protect the integrity of what those neighborhoods look like, um, in order to, to keep those values.
So doesn't that come back to a case-by-case basis to a degree? It does. Just like Leroy was men- and now be quiet here, but just like Leroy was mentioning. God, I said, I said I'll be quiet here. Just like Leroy said, and I wanted to clarify for you, Cheryl, he brought that up for, to be devil's advocate. Okay, and we got a lot of questions on this ordinance and to pass it tonight probably isn't the best thing. That's all.
You know, I, I think clearly, uh, the, the issues of Leroy's brought up, and him were brought up by others before Leroy. Reflect how, how difficult it is, uh, to have an ordinance, uh, creating standards. The reason for the ordinance is to protect, your word, Jim, I think is, or James is a good one, the integrity of the, of the neighborhood-
Yeah.
And the community. Uh, but when you're not in the neighborhood, right, when you're not up in the rest of the footprint of the city of Guthrie. Some of those things don't contain. But trying to write a, a standard and an ordinance that kind of fits all of that is just really, really difficult.
Like James brought up too, if you go behind Ace, there's whole blocks there now that could be remodernized. But they can't be because they don't fit in with what was, what was originally built.
So how, so how do we allow that to happen and but yet protect the integrity of other neighborhoods, Leroy?
I just wanna point out, if for some reason this ordinance is tabled for further refinement. Did everybody understands we're very proud of having Dan as-
Oh, no question. He's done a hell, a heck of a job.
He's very knowledgeable. He understands all the intricacies of these details. He was very articulate in presenting these stuff. So I don't want anybody to think that it's a slight towards Dan if this is tabled for refinement. We're still very proud of Dan and he's doing a good job. We're just asking for some refinement.
Take some of that college work, though.
To what?
Take some of those college words, though, you know, pace of view.
Does it actually have to be tabled?
That's actually the existing code.
Can it just be continued? I mean, uh, I guess you have to table it to continue.
Well, yeah, I mean, of, of course, as staff, the only thing I would like, you, you know, again, if you wanna table it and have some adjustments, that's not a problem whatsoever. However, it would be good to have some, uh, solid feedback on what you're looking for and, and what would be the desire, so then I can go back and obviously react appropriately. So, you know, bring it back again where a little bit of discussion and a little bit of refinement. Rather than kind of bringing it back every time and it's like, nope, try again. So, you know, that's the only thing I-
So maybe this-
And if I could, real quick, I'm sorry, I, I'd probably be amiss not to mention this and, and I wanna get it on record. This did go to the planning commission and they did recommend that the ordinance, as it was presented, they recommended five-oh approval of it. So take that for what it is. Yeah.
Well, there's also, I don't see in the commercial where there's any place for concrete stand-up, tilt-up buildings. I mean, I think there's definitely, I mean, if we were to get, I, I get it within industrial parks. I guess if it's zoned and it all has to do with zoning, but I mean, if we were to get somebody to, to do some type of, uh, manufacturing here, they're either gonna be in a metal facade, a metal building, or a concrete tilt-up structure. And I don't even see concrete tilt-up addressed at all.
But in an industrial, it would be allowed because there's basically no criteria for industrial.
Okay, so I guess, let me ask, so where like John Vance Motors is? I don't, what's that, would that, would it be allowed there?
That's commercial, because that's all C-two over there.
Okay.
Like I said, in the, uh, industrial, I-one, I-two, just like our proposed industrial park, that will be I-one. That has no, the only thing it really would say is we want at least a little bit of kind of architectural, you know, and have a front to it and that. But it could be all metal. It could be a tilt-up. Because you're right, it does not make sense, for instance, like an auto quit who has, I don't know, probably an acre or two acres under roof. I don't know how big it is.
It's pretty big.
It's pretty big and probably is going to expand. It would make no sense to have large manufacturing firms like that to have, you know, sixty percent brick and all this criteria. In that it is absolutely not feasible whatsoever. And so that's why in industrial areas in most communities, you can have the large manufacturing, all metal. You know, make a halfway decent front to it so it looks like an entry and they call it good. But when you get to the commercial, like I said, a lot of codes are like, well, we want a little bit more, you know. And again, to what extent that is, it really is what the community wants. There's no right or wrong answer. It could be what we have now, sixty, forty, metal and whatever else. And, you know, we're happy with what we have. Yeah, uh, I can tell you that a lot of the communities around here like Edmund and those, they do have, uh, you go to any of the newer areas. You go along Covell, you go to new areas, they're pretty much all brick. Or I would say probably sixty to seventy percent brick with, uh, different types of other materials blended in, and they're very nice buildings. And, you know, they're being built. Obviously, they want to be there. So to some extent, architectural requirements could be maybe a deterrent. But honestly, in my career, I've never seen it as a sole reason somebody doesn't come to a community, uh, in that. Because I, I've dealt with those people. I've dealt with- Because I dealt with those people, I've dealt with the, well, we're just going to leave. And it's like, okay, you know, and eventually that gets built and it gets built to different standards. You know, and I, I won't go real long into it, but I can tell you, you know, if you're developing, you want to save all the money you possibly can. So if you can tell the local jurisdiction, I don't want to do this and I just want to do metal, and everybody says, okay, that's what they'll do. But a lot of times, if you do hold a little bit strong and say, well, this is our requirements, they already decided they want to be here, they'll usually meet it. So I'll just leave it with that.
I, I agree with almost all of you. But as far as the planning commission having the authority to, uh, override some things, I totally agree. Because I've been upon the commission, it's very near and dear to my person. But I think they should be gay and that they should have meetings and all that. But incidentally, of course, it doesn't, and it can't be last day not.
Well, and, and that could be put in there as well, provision. It, it, it was for the architectural aspect. And again, the reason that that was put in there, and it's not uncommon in a lot of codes, is once again, you can never think of all the possible scenarios you're going to have. I don't care what requirements you put in, you know, things evolve, you're going to have people come in with a building. And you, literally, I've been in those situations where I'm like, man, that is an awesome building. I wish I could get you there, I can't. It, our, because our code's very strict or our code is very specific and what you have is not in the code. So we either go to a variance, which technically it doesn't mean the hardship, because the hardship should be, I can't build my building, not I have architectural aspects that I can't meet. And so a lot of them have that exception in there to say, if we get that one or two times where there's like, wow, that's really nice, we want that, there's an ability to still get them where they want to go in that. Now, in, in this one, it was kind of more open-ended because it said six one and six two, which put all the requirements of six one and six two theoretically under the planning commission. The intent was just strictly the architectural aspects. But again, that can be eliminated entirely. It could be said to the city council in that I don't think that the board of adjustment is the pro, uh, appropriate mechanism for that in any regard. Because it's not really doing, uh, your bulk setback type variances. It's more of exceptions to certain standards that again, aren't typical, you know, setbacks, you know, uh, lot coverage or, or that. It's architectural design aspects and that. But it can be eliminated entirely. It was just an option as, again, a road to where if something comes in, instead of telling them to no, we may have an avenue to get them there.
When you see a proposal with, with a dissent, you can pick your eye that the producer of the ordinance didn't receive.
Right, yeah.
One possibility, if you want refinements to it, is have someone work with Dan. You could have a committee of three councilmen that kind of represents the various viewpoints that you all have expressed tonight. They could meet in committee with Dan to discuss some of these refinements. Particular items that you want refined, if you're not one of those three, if you would email them to Dan in that committee so that they're aware of it, then Dan could work with that committee of three to refine it, to bring it back.
That is a good idea, but also, that's, like, a lot of people probably seen this meeting tonight, hopefully. Okay, and this is where in the questions arise. It's not just us, I mean, the constituents out there see this and they're going, now wait a minute, how about this? Did you think about this? No, never thought about that. Huh, that's why it's good to have workshops. I typically watch all of the planning, I didn't see any of this in planning, because I probably, I missed it, obviously.
Yeah, it wasn't.
It, it, was it a long meeting or was it just go through, I mean, was it planning after planning on this deal?
No.
Because I didn't see any of it.
Yeah, it went to one meeting, there was public there, uh, in that, there was probably about twelve public there. I went over in, in much more detail, and as you can imagine, I like to talk, so I went in much more detail, which probably maybe put them to sleep and they were bored and that's why they approved it.
I don't know, I don't know. You did a great job on it, but I'm just wondering.
But it did go to them, and, and honestly, I, I was prepared to have maybe more than one meeting, but they were happy with it and decided to go ahead and make a motion and recommend it.
See.
Uh, with the, I will say with the, uh, zoning code update, there will be more meetings. There'll be an initial meeting where it's going to be nothing, but here's what we're doing. Here's some, give some feedback. And then we may have another meeting to say, okay, here's what we've done, and possibly a third meeting. And that's at both the planning commission and the council, so I'm pining on maybe six to eight meetings total. Because there's a lot of stuff there, but it's something that honestly, we as a community need to do. I have people coming in now, believe it or not, that want to do stuff in Guthrie and I cannot get them there.
Yeah, I get it.
Because our zoning code is so outdated.
Yeah.
And this is just one aspect in that. And again, uh, you know, I was just going to say, if there's people out there in the community and they have say, they should either email me or email you guys, so we get a better understanding of what the community wants. Because this is what it's about, what the community wants. Not what I want necessarily, or what I think is right or wrong. It's what do we want as a community for our, you know, architecture, for when somebody comes into town, what they perceive our city to look like and see, that's what we want, that's the end game.
Yeah, I agree.
I think most of us like what, what read off this.
Oh, yeah, and, and again, I, I think Leroy, yeah, I think, I thank Leroy for the kind words, you know, and that. But that's the thing, trust me, I'm not offended by any means and I'm not taking anything personally. Yeah, I'm not taking anything personally, because, you know, it's all part of the job in, in that. And I knew it wasn't going to be necessarily a slam dunk in that. But like I said, honestly, we need to have these conversations and that and get to a point where we're all happy with everything. And I have a document that is enforceable, so we can move on and like Leroy and I talked, so we're not back here in a year or two.
Okay, so, so what's, so what's the council's next step? What would you prefer to do? We've got a couple of different options here. Obviously this table, let, let Dan, we hash, Leroy has suggested a, uh, some young group of us, uh, and clearly, all of us having input, emails, uh, to Dan, uh, after this meeting, that, that could be, I think, uh, given, but it's up, up to us. Um, where do you want to go?
Well, it says.
I think a motion to the table with, and form a committee to work on the same, and then go out to later date.
We have a, we have a motion and a second. I'd form a committee, uh, and, uh, any other discussion? Any volunteers to be?
Well, I just think of work, doing all this in a workshop on the front end would have been the way to go.
Okay, but we're past that.
I, I know we're past that. And because it says discussion and possible action, it doesn't say discussion and action. So we can do whatever we want at this point.
James, I want to put you on the spot. Um, it's probably just part of your, your, uh, daily, like, knowledge, uh, would you be willing to be a part of that three-person, uh, subgroup, work with Dan and come up with the next one? Are there other, uh, volunteers?
I'll go on it.
There you go. So we got James, James.
James, Cheryl Bryant.
Okay.
Okay, that does not relieve any of us from giving some feedback.
Yeah, it does. I know, I'm kidding, Steve.
And I, I would say that, that we need to give Dan in this subgroup some of that, the feedback of what's happening now. It is a near impossible task.
I see what, I see what Dan's coming from though, he's, he's having to walk away from stuff potentially, I get it.
Yeah.
I do get that.
Yeah.
But maybe it doesn't have to be an all or nothing.
No, there, there's definitely in between.
Okay, we have, we have, we have a motion and a second with the three-person team as identified and required, uh, that each of us to, uh, provide some feedback to Dan, uh, and request input from the community. Uh, any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Dan? Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Bacheroy?
Aye.
Councilman Channel?
Aye.
Councilwoman Pageant?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Case? Councilman Long?
Yes.
And Dan, yes, unanimous approval then on the table, three-person team, input to you.
Perfect, thank you.
Item number five, discussion of possible action to approve task number one three nine for thirty-two thousand dollars. Myers Engineering, for phase one and two of the Guthrie Lake spillway recap.
I'm going to substitute for Tenny, he, he, uh, could not be here, so I'll, I'll try to act like Tenny.
Okay, you want to come here and state your name and address?
The, my address is City Hall. This thirty-two thousand will move us forward on the grant from FEMA, uh, through the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, to actually get to point of design, we could finalize the budget. Uh, the thirty-two thousand dollars of work we're doing, sixty-five percent of it, or twenty thousand eight hundred, will be paid from the grant. Uh, eleven thousand two hundred will be paid out of city funds. Uh, this project could vary, depend on the findings of this study. It could be, you know, uh, a two million dollar project, it could be less, depending on what we find or the needs of the spillway from the study. So to move forward, to get to phase two of the grant process, we got to identify the work that needs to be done. And that's what this thirty-two thousand will allow us to do.
Any questions, Leroy? Okay, I'll entertain a motion then, to approve that task order.
So moved.
A motion and a second? Motion and a second? Any other discussion? All right, unanimous roll call vote. Councilman Bacheroy?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor, right, Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Channel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pageant?
Aye.
Councilman Long?
Yes.
Vice, Vice Mayor Case? Or Getling, yes, unanimous approval then to move forward with task order one three nine, three thousand dollars, Myers Engineering. Item number six, discussion of possible action to approve task order number one four five, uh, for the sum of one hundred and thirty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars to Myers Engineering for the industrial park infrastructure project.
This will be, um, preliminary design and final design of the industrial park. It involves planning the utility extensions to the industrial park, uh, doing a plat of the industrial park, uh, uh, designing the, uh, we plan to do it in phase one, phase two, so there'll be some road improvements inside the industrial park that will have to be designed and, uh, bid specs put together for, uh, so there's a lot of things involved in this industrial park. It could be as much as a four million dollar project, by the time we extend all the utilities, do the site, uh, uh, prep work on it to get it shovel-ready. This is the engineering piece to do all that, uh, and, and that's what we're asking for tonight, so that we have authority for Myers to move forward. They've done a lot of preliminary work before this task order that will, of course, be included in this, but they have been working with us on it.
Questions, Leroy? Right, I'll entertain a motion then.
The move.
Motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Councilman Channel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pageant?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Case? Councilman Long?
Yes.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Bacheroy?
Aye.
And Getling, yes, unanimous approval then to approve task order one four five for one hundred and thirty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars, Myers Engineering. Item number seven is recognition of service, presentation of this ceremonial dollar to council members for a year of service for our community. You're right.
We'll try to make some nice remarks. The Guthrie Code of Ordinance, uh, under Article Two, Elective Officers, Section two point eight compensation states, "The mayor and the councilman of the city of Guthrie shall receive a salary of one dollar per annum." We'll make any snide comments on that. Uh, it's always been clear throughout the last twelve months, you all love this city, you take your role seriously, you've sacrificed to serve this community, you do what you believe is right, and individually and as a group, you have protected this city and made it better. Many times, you not get the thanks that you so richly deserve. Throughout the year, you've demonstrated that serving on the council is a calling, a way to contribute to better our community. You do make a difference and we appreciate what you do. And what a year it has been. Maybe not one we want to repeat anytime soon. In May of nineteen, we had the flood event. We've been working through multiple FEMA and ODOT, um, emergency relief fund projects ever since. Some of them are just now going out for bids. This spring, we had the COVID-nineteen pandemic to deal with. Uncharted water, no playbook to guide us through it. We've had to do it as we go and as we learn. We gained two new city council members, we had two council members left, and then they returned. Sometimes early in the year, we seem to be a little dysfunctional. We went through a lot of team-building discussions and efforts throughout this year. However, throughout all this, we continue to provide quality public service and move several of our priority capital projects towards implementation. Uh, with heartfelt thanks, I will now present to each of you your ceremonial dollar. Uh, first, Mayor Gitling. Thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you.
I won't shake your hand under the circumstances. And Ward one, Councilman Case.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. And Councilman Long. I scratched a few of your choice words in the other block. And Ward two, Councilman Taylor and Councilman Bacheroy.
Thank you Leroy.
Thank you for your service. And Ward three, Councilman Channel. You've been waiting a long time for this, haven't you?
I, yeah. You know, this is, this is like the Purple Heart, but wait, there's more. In the spirit of keeping Guthrie great, I'm donating my salary to whatever department needs it.
Already know.
Okay.
And Councilman for that. Again, thank you all for your service.
Leroy, you want to stay there and do your item number eight with your city manager report?
What I thought is I, I thought maybe for instance, it's getting, uh, a little bit late, is that, uh, I would pass these out and let you go through. And if you have follow-up questions, uh, what this is, is I tried to take our public work project, because we kind of put things on hold for a little while during the pandemic. Now we're getting things started up. There were some things that we can work on in the office even through the pandemic. So this is kind of update on our public work project and where we are. And, uh, I'll just let you take a long look at it. If you got follow-up questions, just email. But I can go through it if you want.
You will email. Okay, thank you Leroy. Item number nine is comments from the city council, uh, Councilwoman Pageant. I know you all will be really surprised that I had no comment. Councilman Channel?
If anybody got a dollar up the bar? I know I heard they were saying that, but I know they, I'm good.
Councilman Bacheroy?
I'm good, no, thank you.
that correct? Is that correct? Okay. Assistant Superintendent of the Year for the state, so that's not bad. Want to say congratulations to him and to Dr. Simpson. And other than that, thank you, Dan. Appreciate all your hard work on that.
Councilman Long?
I just wanted to thank Dan also for working to put this together. I think this is something we desperately need, and we obviously aren't there yet in agreement, but I think that once we get there, we'll be glad we did.
I'd like to say that, Dan, and quite honestly, it's just lovely to be the only one who lives, so just thank you a little bit. I do have a question, Leroy. I've been, I've been just posting universal texts over the last years, and I've never gotten satisfied to be able to have a personal, you know, that and ask me. Why it is, we go into the bad week of three-year, previous vaccination on our dog, but the city wants to... I'm going to go back to the dog, we're... They don't expect us three-year vaccination. I've got my dog given a vaccination last three years, but the city don't need to...
City clerk handles that. Kim, do you have an answer for that?
Somebody asked me about it, so I told them I'd bring it up.
I think back in the day, vaccinations were good for a year, but since that time, vaccinations have progressed. We're now... And it's lasted three years, and I think we probably never...
Updated ordinance?
Yeah, I think it was a deal that...
We'll look at it and respond back.
Thank you. All right. Well, congratulations to all my colleagues on the council for their one year. Some many more than one year, but certainly for the last year, it has been an interesting year. Leroy admits that for a number of reasons. Also, I'd like to thank the citizens of Guthrie. I think we're holding pretty strong on the number of cases of virus, and I think, James, I think the last I saw was 15 and positives, and 14 of those have recovered. And I appreciate people doing the things that CDC says to do to minimize spread, and appreciate you for putting up with each other. Councilman Bauteroy, I'm looking out for you, you help me. Good words for all of us to live by. To that...